Welcome, everyone. I want to call the August 5th, 2025 regular scheduled board meeting to order. I've asked Mr. Perkins, as usual, to lead us in the prayer, and then Commissioner Mobley is going to lead us in the pledge. If you would, please stand.
Amen. Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come that God thanking you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, God, for allowing us to be in this space at this time. We thank you, God, for keeping us, oh God, if we traveled the highway and made it safe for us. And God, we ask that you come in this meeting that God have your way with God. Look upon our Chairman, God, that you give him the knowledge of wisdom, oh God, to lead this board, they God. Pray, they God, that you bless every member on this board. And we seek out ways and means, they God, to be able to sufficiently, they God, run this county, they God. As you bless all of our people here tonight, bless all of our workers out there, they God, working in the hot sun, God, protect and keep them. And so, God, you look about all our department heads, look upon them in the mighty way, they God. Pray, God, that you're blessed, oh God, and we shall give you praise and glory. Christ, we pray. Amen.
Let's believe in the truth of the United States of America and live in the right public where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For those of y'all that just got here, we've been here since about 8:45, so excuse us if we try to keep this pretty short. We've been here all day doing budget workshops. So, and we'll be back here in the morning at nine o'clock if any of y'all are aboard, like to come back for that. Item number one on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the July 15th, 2025 regular scheduled board meeting. Any questions, comments, corrections to those minutes? Or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. It is 5:36. So we have two time-specific agenda items. That's item number 22 being the first one. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-24-08-01 by Barbara Beatty Trustee to be granted a special permit under Section 4 dot 14 dot 5B3 of Swan County Land Development Regulations for RV Park and Campground on the Property Zone Commercial Highway Interchange, CHI. Mr. Meeks?
Do you swear firm testimony giving this calls will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be God?
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before you is a special permit request for RV Park and Campground. The site is approximately a 57-acre parcel of property sitting at the southeast intersection of US 90 and I-10. According to the site plan that was submitted as part of the application, the sites are, is proposed to be a 200-site RV Park and Campground. The installation of the sites to the RV Park and Campground is set to be phased in, come in in phases. The zoning on the property is commercial highway interchange, and as the district intent in the land development regulations state for commercial highway interchange property, that it caters to the needs of the traveling public, so that a variety of the uses that are listed in the CHI zoning cater to the hospitality industry, hotels, motels, and also includes RV parks and campgrounds. A year or so ago, the board had adopted some new guidelines and standards for RV parks and campgrounds, and there was a five-mile separation between RV parks and campgrounds that was adopted in the agricultural zoning. However, the same rule does not apply to properties in a commercial highway interchange. So the distant separation would not be an issue in this. However, the site would be required to be connected to a centralized sanitary water and sewer system. So this would be, the land use approval would be for them to be able to start the project. However, we currently have water that's available at the interchange, and the expansion of that is ongoing, and then we are in the process of installing sanitary sewer at the site. So the RV Park and Campground could not get a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion until the site is serviced and connected to those centralized utilities. So they would become one of the county's users for the water and sewer located at the I-10 and US 90 interchange. You have in your pocket the application, the supporting documentation, and a proposed site plan. You also have a resolution in there that is written for approval. If the board were to cite a reason for denial, then the board would need to cite which specific sections of the LDRs that they are denying them based off of. And also, you have the availability of adopting certain conditions if you feel that they are warranted in this ask. If you don't have any questions of me at this time, I would enter the file into the record.
Admit it as one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Does any board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Mr. Meeks, I have one. On the water sewer...
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that you'll have the answer, so I guess I'm hypothetical. So in the event, or when water and sewer is available to that site, would it be mandatory for them to hook up? It would be mandatory.
That would be the only way that they could get a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion, so there would not be the allowance of installation of private water well or septic tank.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that, but I was multitasking. I just wanted to make sure. I mean, because I don't, I don't think we want however many lots are out there. I don't think we want half that many, 100 septic tanks.
Okay.
That was my question. Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks at this time?
Commissioner.
You?
Yeah.
Commissioner Perkins. I quit whispering. Talking to the mic.
I was talking to you here.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Meeks, I'll take it back off of what the chairman said in there. Now, they were tied on, we were just, the county would furnish up to the property line, and then they would be responsible carrying out to each one of their drops, each one of their locations.
That would be my understanding, because the county would still, you know, the expansion of the utilities are ongoing. So at such time as the utilities cross US 90 and come back towards the interstate, then it would be the applicant's responsibility to run those utilities to their property.
Okay.
They said they were going to phase it in. Do you know how many spots they're going to start with, or did they give?
I don't know. I don't know, like, how that number would start. It may, it may speed up or slow down. They had talked about phasing it in when they met with myself and Mr. Norris, when we met with them about the project. But in all reality, if you're bringing the utilities to the property, it may be cheaper to do it all at once.
Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks at this time? All right. At this time, I'll open the floor, open the floor to public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this matter? I got one coming, I think. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Richard Snyder, 29th Road, Branford. I just have a question only because I'm still new to some of this stuff. So in relationship to some of these RV parks coming in, what is the economic impact directly, like, from bed tax and different things like that when they do this? So it goes from just blank property to now it's going to have potentially 200 sites. What is the direct impact? Not the people buying from the local area, but, like, literally the tax on their stay. Is that accounted for at any point in time? I'm just curious what it might be. Or what, not necessarily the dollar amount, but does that impact here?
Well, in this case, I think the impact would be, I mean, direct and indirect, but hypothetical on how many sites they develop. What's phase one?
I don't know the exact one on phase one, but overall.
I think I read.
But there is a tax on it that...
Yeah, I mean, they paid it, yeah.
So that's what I was trying to get.
Then you have to pay sales tax on it as well on the state.
And the TDC tax is collected, the bed tax.
All right. That's what I was, I just wanted to know. I didn't know if they paid those or not. I just wanted to make sure.
Plus, it's assessed different, too.
Okay.
So the improvements would be assessed on the property. You have a bed tax would be collected on the property, and then you have the utility fees that would be collected on the property.
Any other questions for Ms., or any other comments from the public? That's where I was at.
Is there a representative here for you?
There, you're right.
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record when you get here, please.
My name is Scott Beatty. Address is 16508 60th Place B in Live Oak, Florida.
Commissioner White, you have a question for?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you how you plan on phasing that in. Do you have any idea what you're going to start with? How many spots?
My brother was supposed to be here to answer those questions. I do not have a number of the area that, it's only going to be the front area at the start, which would be up toward the entrance road to the office, which looks to be about maybe 30 spots.
That's where I read it. Stage one is 30 to 50 RV parking areas, shower and bathroom for eight, and then police the attack. So I guess step, phase one would be 30 to 50 slots.
Yes, sir.
I knew I read that somewhere.
In a bathhouse.
In a bathhouse. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Beatty at this time? Thank you, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you.
We've covered it. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item, Mr. Broders? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any other board discussion in regards to this? Do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Hale, you good? It's your district.
Yep, so moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale, have a second to approve by Commissioner White. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Jim.
That public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is another, well, not the next one, but item 23 is also a time-specific. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the enactment, enactment of an ordinance amending Section 2 of the Swan County Ordinances, providing for appointment of ad hoc special magistrates for code enforcement, prohibiting the county attorney from presenting cases to an ad, an ad hoc special magistrate, repealing ordinances in conflict and providing for an effective date. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Chairman. As we were going over and having Mr. Peters appointed and going through our magistrate procedures, a hole in our code revealed itself, which is we don't have a mechanism for providing for an ad hoc special magistrate or a special magistrate to appear in the case that the appointed special magistrate has a conflict, is sick, is unavailable. So we needed a mechanism to appoint an ad hoc special magistrate, so that way our zoning enforcement can continue on. Speed does tend to be of the utmost in this, because the situation where conflicts get used as a weapon is you show up at the hearing, and the person who is being, has to defend it will make allegations against the, the person who's acting as the judge or the special magistrate. And you need to move quickly, because you don't want that to be a strategy that works in terms of putting off enforcement. So what other jurisdictions have done, and what I put in here, is that in the event the special magistrate is unavailable due to either conflict or just unavailability, the county attorney, in this case it would be me, but whomever my successors are, would be responsible for appointing the person to act as an ad hoc special magistrate, who would only have power over just those cases where the special magistrate has certified in writing that they are unavailable. Further, because the county attorney would have been the person to appoint the special magistrate, our code provides that the county attorney is the person responsible for presenting cases to the special magistrate if staff wants an attorney to present a case to the special magistrate, so to avoid any appearance of impropriety. It also amends the ordinance to say that if there is a county-appointed ad hoc special magistrate, the county attorney cannot appear in front of that ad hoc special magistrate. And if staff wants an attorney to present a case to that special magistrate, then county would have to hire outside counsel. So this just patches up a hole that revealed itself through these most recent proceedings. So that's the ordinance, and I think it solves that problem.
There's a whole bunch of ad hoc in there.
So... Kanzu tight.
So, Mr. Morrison, to sum this up, basically, number one, this ordinance would restrict the county attorney at any time from presenting a case in front of the special magistrate as also being the county attorney, too. Right?
So it, so here, there's two tracks. So in track one, let's just say it's a regular case that appears in front of the special magistrate. I would be allowed to act as the county attorney and present evidence to the special magistrate.
On behalf of the county?
On behalf of the county, act as the county's advocate. If, however, there is an ad hoc special magistrate, so let's take that same situation, and just pulling something out of the view, out of the blue, the person who's cited for code enforcement is the special magistrate's father-in-law. Well, that's a conflict. So the special magistrate's unavailable to hear that case fairly, and that presents the hole in our ordinance situation, because we don't have a mechanism to get somebody who can hear that case, and the answer is not, well, then we don't enforce. Right? So it allows the county attorney to go ahead and appoint an ad hoc special magistrate, ad hoc, meaning just for this. So to provide, to preside over just that case, if that is a case that the county attorney appointed the special magistrate to preside over, just to avoid any appearance of impropriety, it just, it wouldn't look right, using me as the example, for me to appoint the person to act as the judge, and then for me to appear in front of that judge in the same case. So the county staff would then have to hire outside counsel if county staff wanted an attorney to present a case in front of that ad hoc special magistrate. Just as an aside, and I did put this in the executive summary, in practically every case, staff proceeds without an attorney. Since I've been on board as county attorney, not one time ever have I appeared in front of the special magistrate on behalf of the county. So, but we want the ordinances to be as wide-ranging as possible, so that way we don't get off the rails when it comes to enforcement.
Is it good practice or bad practice that you've never been in front of the special magistrate representing the county?
No, it's actually a really good question. Because, no, it's good, because it means our staff knows how to present the case and knows what they're doing in order to present the case that merits issuance of orders. So we've had orders that have been issued by the general, by the special magistrate. Staff handled them independently. There's no requirement in law that the county attorney has to be there and act as a prosecutor. I mean, it's, it's supposed to be an informal, as best as you can, process, because remember, the goal for the special magistrate is not punishment. The goal in front of the special magistrate is enforcement to the point of, okay, we're going to get in compliance. So it's a different type of procedure, and so, no, it's actually a very good thing that I've not done that.
Just wanted to clarify. Any questions for Mr. Morrison?
No.
All right. I have to open the floor to public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any board discussion? Sounds like he's just cleaning up, for clarity purposes, cleaning up an ordinance. But I guess this came of whereabouts. We just went through the, our previous magistrate has retired, and we've hired another one. So then, I guess, in researching that, you kind of found some, what you felt like might be...
And quite frankly, we ran into an enforcement issue of, I've got a retired special magistrate, and we've got to go through an RFQ and do all kinds of other stuff before we can get a new one in. Well, what happens in that meantime? As a practical matter, in Swan County, it meant there's no code enforcement. So let's solve that problem.
So going forward, if the current one retires, the county attorney could say, hey, you're now...
Bob Jones, you're the ad hoc special magistrate.
Until we go through another...
You got it.
Process of hiring another one. Any other board discussion? Or do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Y'all, same time. I'll go, motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner White. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll close that public hearing. Back to the agenda. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. Anyone, Mr. Broders, I know you do. Anybody present wishing to speak on any public matters? I do have two, a couple cards here, or I got one. Mr. Broders, you want to come on up? I've seen you raise your hand a couple times. Welcome, Mr. Broders. Name and address when you get there.
Keith Broders, 970 Southwest Pine Mount Road in Lake City, Florida. I just wanted to let everybody know that September is coming up, which is the important date that we all should know, is September 17th was the date that the Constitution was signed by the delegates at the Constitutional Convention. I'll be teaching a class in the month of September, which I'll announce at the next Board of County Commissioners meeting. The thing I wanted to mention tonight is the fact that in the Bible, it tells us that we will be destroyed for our lack of knowledge. And I think that is absolutely true. The forces that are controlling our government are frankly evil forces, and we are basically being deceived because of our ignorance. And I'm going to try to do this best I can to help you to understand what some of the problems are and what some of the solutions are. I've distributed several of my cards. I've created some websites designed to help you to educate yourself, your children, your grandchildren, and the people that you care about, about the Constitution. We have literally, in this country, we have millions of schoolteachers that are teaching our children a bunch of things that are just not true, and we need to have citizen educators, namely, parents and grandparents, to make sure that their children are given the right information. Because if you give the old expression, garbage in, garbage out. And so we need, frankly, to educate ourselves. There's a lot of things that we don't know. I'll bet you right now that most of you don't know this, but George Washington was not the first president of the United States. The United States was essentially brought into being in 1776, but George Washington didn't take office until 1789. So there's, like, 13 years in between, and there were several presidents of the United States before George Washington. Most people didn't know that. Most people seem to think that the Declaration of Independence was basically signed on July the 4th. That's not true. The Declaration of Independence was approved on July 2nd, and it wasn't actually signed until August. There's so many things that we've been taught that aren't true. And so I want you to understand that in order to escape this mess that we're in, we need to educate ourselves. We need to take individual and personal responsibility to do what we can to educate ourselves, so that we can be a part of the solution, rather than a perpetuation of the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Broders, for your comment. Is anyone else wishing to speak, or I'll call out the name card I got. I got Mr. Richard Mercer Roberts. Mr. Roberts has requested a little bit more time. He has a disability, so I'm going to grant that to you. Normally, it's three minutes, but I'm going to give you a little bit extra, Mr. Roberts.
You want my address?
I got it. 26006 State Road 247, Branford. Yes, sir.
Pass that to her. Good evening, commissioners and community members. My name is Richard Mercer Roberts, Jr. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about a project I've been planning, launching after completing my environmental science degree, H2 Lab on Wheels. This mobile laboratory will provide well-water testing to residents in rural areas, Swan County. I will test water only focusing on helping veteran farmers and families who rely on private wells for drinking waters. Too many residents are aware of risk of the water expressly chemical like PFAS. It's P-F-A-S, which is linked to cancer, immune, and birth defects. This chemical can go undetected in well water for years. My mobile lab will bring trust, science-based water testing directly to people's home, enable them to take action to protect their health. In July of 2025, I received a letter from Donald Trump acknowledging and support this effect. I am also working to push federal funding, including these programs that those support hospital and nursing homes, to help launch H2O Lab on Wheels. Rural community dissolve the same level of attention to protect as any other areas where it comes to safety of their drinking water. This project combines my background plumbing with my environmental education, and it's my way to give back to the community. Thank you for allowing me to share my vision. I hope to earn your support to advantage this mission. Respectfully, Richard Mercer Roberts, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Moses Clipper, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak, Florida, representing we, the people of North Central Florida. I got Agenda 4 and 11 here that I'd like to speak to. On number four, I'm sure there's some that know more about this than me, but what I read in the back papers, it looks like we're paying about $70,000 a year in interest over the last 12 years, which is about $840,000. I could only assume that that is to preserve the $4 million in principal. Not so sure that that's a good idea, even at 2%. That's a 2% net loss, or over the last 12 years, $840,000. I'm not going to do that with my money. Don't know that any of you would do that with your personal finances. I'd like for y'all to reconsider that, for sure. I'd hate to see that go straight to 5-0 approval without any discussion, but I'm prepared for it, too. Number 11, kudos to Mr. Music for returning the $200,000, $205,000. I hope that's the new trend he's planning on setting. I want to commend Mr. Commissioner Mobley for last meeting, for inquiring about the possibility of an ordinance with LDRs that would create policy to require more appealing towers within our cell towers within our county. Unfortunately, our often liberal-acting attorney verbally redirected Commissioner Mobley's question and intent by stating that denying was not a good idea. To remind you, at no time did Commissioner Mobley imply or indicate that he was considering denying the request. Initially, our attorney did not address Commissioner Mobley's request, and only addressed placement and fit of the tower, also stating that the board can only vote to approve or deny the permit, when actually the third option would be to table it. When Commissioner Mobley restated his question, our attorney finally admitted that he did not know, even though this request has been made at every meeting concerning new towers for years. Our attorney warned the board to be very hesitant in to require what towers look like. In other words, he said, as your paid legal advisor, even though I don't know if it's okay or not, do not do it. Our Development Services Director indicated that requirements by policy would be appropriate. Unfortunately, seemingly due to the strong recommendation of legal counsel, even without certainty of our inability to require more appealing towers to be constructed, the item was approved unanimously. I look forward to Mr. Morrison's more informed information pertaining to this matter being presented today. Don't want to talk about anybody's, anyone after they're gone. Things I wouldn't talk about while they're here. So our current administrator is responsible for the taxpayers being burdened with over an additional $500,000 in salary and benefit increases each year, since he took the position with a large portion of that going to the elite, over-proportioned, high-salary group of individuals that he has created. Many of us are concerned that the $5,000 the board has spent on searching for a replacement administrator is just a smoke screen and a preemptive damage control effort to prevent backlash once the current assistant administrator is appointed to that position. Our concern is that the fact that this assistant has been groomed by the current administrator and has basically the same liberal, fiscal mentality of the current administrator, which is not in the best interest of the taxpayers. I can list again the many unnecessary spendings and extravagances that the current administration has caused us. If nothing else, just the fact that the current administrator, his assistant, and others... others elites have charged taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars in overtime, even though they are exempt salaried employees, giving proof that their commitment is not in the best interest of the taxpayers. It speaks volumes when one will take advantage of a bad policy that was instituted by the decision of a corrupted previous administration for the personal gain at the expense of the taxpayers. We are still waiting to hear that the board has implemented the policy to prevent this abuse of taxpayers' dollars in the future.
Mr. Clepper, you about done?
And finally, we, the people of North Central Florida, is within our seven minutes, according to y'all's policy.
Oh, so you're speaking, where's your other, where's your other party members as you're speaking?
It's a private group.
No, are they present? They have to be present?
I've got more than one present here.
Raise your hand. If you're with Mr. Clepper and he's speaking on behalf of you to get your...
I'm a member.
And it's a private group, so you ordering them to speak up is not appropriate.
Oh, okay.
It's a private group.
All right. I'm going to read over this again. Go ahead, finish your thing.
Finally, we are, we are very concerned and disappointed that the board hired the recent code enforcement magistrate, special magistrate, knowing that he has an undesirable and untrustworthy record and was not even the candidate with the best scorecard. And two points, less than 10 seconds. Economic development in Columbia County has appeared to have landed a major steel mill development, going to employ five or 600 jobs, it appears. It seemed like just high salaries and being like the saying of economic development don't always pull over. And I've inquired multiple times about the compensation study that the taxpayers paid $50,000, $5,000 for, and I'd like to see that be noticed when that comes in.
Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation by Economic Development Director Jimmy Norris.
Good afternoon. I know y'all are tired. Been a long day. I do want to say real quick, though, a year ago today, I think we were camped out at my office over there trying to get stuff out of there before it went underwater. I believe Hurricane Debbie dealt us a pretty powerful blow, so I hear it raining outside, and I'm like, Lord, just please bless us. We don't get that again. But I just wanted to bring a guest here. This gentleman doesn't really realize it, but we wanted him here before he probably even knew Swanee County existed. And so we're real tickled he's here, and I'm going to bust a bubble a little bit. Has anybody in here been to Chick-fil-A? Loud and proud if you've been to Chick-fil-A. Was it good service? Did you like it? All right. Well, I want to introduce Mr. Neil Rogers. He's a friend. He wanted to be in Swanee County, and he's going to tell you his story, so I'm going to keep it simple.
Welcome, sir. Thank you very much. Commissioners, appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak. Everybody that's been to Chick-fil-A, thank y'all so much. I definitely want to tell y'all thank you. I really do appreciate it. We felt the warmth of Lavo and Swanee County since we've been here, and I'm so appreciative and so thankful for that. If you ever come and it's not good, please let me know because I want to make it right because I always want it to be good, so please let me know. But thank you for that. But I just wanted, I'm brand new here to Swanee County, brand new here to Lavo. I grew up in Badaea, Georgia, about three hours north of here. I've been with Chick-fil-A for about 10 years now. My process to become an owner operator of a Chick-fil-A restaurant started back in 2021, and from that time, my wife and I, who we have two small children, wanted to be in a small town very similar to how we grew up. And so when the opportunity for Lavo came available, we did a lot of research. We actually visited here in Cognito just to kind of check everything out, met some people, and really enjoyed being in this community and are very thankful to be here now. One of the things when we were doing our research for the county that we wanted to, that I wanted to make sure was known was we did some YouTube searches and found the "We Are Swannee" advertisements that the Economic Development Office did, and that really gave us confidence that being here, we were in a thriving community, we're in a growing community, we're a community that we could be in for a long, long time, and also be a very successful business. So my wife is Amy. She's six feet tall and blonde. I have two, two kids, a two and a half year old tornado boy and an eight month old little girl. So if you see us around town, if you see us at the restaurant, please don't hesitate to say hello. I'd love to meet as many people as I possibly can. If I don't remember your name the first time, just remind me. It may come with a free breakfast item if I don't remember. So I just wanted to say again, just thank you guys so much. Thank y'all for being great. I know the city of Lavo as well has been amazing with the building, the construction of the project. And I know the county is super excited to have something new and fresh for our community, and I'm very thankful to be here. So thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Please come see us. 1801 Ohio Avenue North. And you asked a lot of people to state their address. For a little while, I thought that was mine. But as you can see, I'm here tonight, so we're getting better. Give us a little bit of grace as we start to learn a little bit more now that our corporate training team has left, but we're doing everything in our power to make sure we serve our community well. So our mission for the restaurant is to be for Swannee. We just want to do everything we can for our community and making sure we're doing everything to take care of them. So thank you so much for the time. Appreciate the opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
I don't have any questions. I've never met you, but didn't know what you were going to say here tonight, but I think that what you said is, is a testament to the good work that Mr. Norris does and the amount that they put into that Team Swannee and the ad. And then, you know, secondly, like you said, you visited here in Cognito, as you said, and what I would say to the people here tonight is you never know who's walking around our streets looking at our community. So I know you came here tonight and you heard some negativity, and but there's some, obviously some positive stuff going on here, and we try to stay positive and, and be a good community. And I would ask our people here tonight that to be mindful that when you're out in the public, you may have a Mr. Rogers here that's looking to relocate or bring in a new Chick-fil-A, and he says to you in Cognito, seeing, seeing how we act and what we do and what kind of people we are. So I'm glad we impressed you. I'm glad you're here. My kids are frequent flyers.
Thank you.
I don't know if that comes with a VIP card or something, but I think I got, I could get one.
Yeah, we might could get you a card.
Don't ask from the podium.
I'm not asking. I said VIP card.
Yeah. Absolutely. Just want to say, this is actually the first county commission meeting I've ever been to in my life. I haven't been important enough to do that until now, I guess. But you know, like what I've seen thus far is definitely every single person that's here is trying to do the best they can for our county, and I'm super excited for that. Like whether we agree, whether we disagree, to me, it just seems like everybody's looking forward to be their best for Swannee, and that's what we need to do. So I just want to say thank you. For those of you who've come to Chick-fil-A, thank you so much. Please come back. We're super excited to serve you. Our team is excited. They're getting better day to day. And again, just thank you to you guys for what you did. Thank you.
Any board members got anything for Mr. Rogers before he leaves?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hey, hey, it's my pleasure.
The line's full out there. I see your line's full. Your driveway's full.
Yeah, listen, we've been very blessed. We've been very fortunate, super grateful for, for what we've had show up so far, not only Swannee County, but the surrounding counties as well. And I'm just, I'm hoping here in the next month, we're going to really work hard to keep those lines as clear as possible so people think, man, it should be quick to go through there. So that's what we're trying to make sure happens, but thank y'all again.
I don't know where you came from to Lavo, but I hope it's from the south and you're used to this kind of weather.
Hey, listen, like I said, I'm from three hours north of here, so Hurricane Helene last year knocked out my entire county, where I'm from, for, for two months. So hurricanes, we typically don't get that. We typically just get the dump and the rain, and all the farmers get excited, but, but anyway, you know, we're prepared for it. We're excited. We hope we can serve the community if anything were to happen like that.
And likewise, if there's anything that this board can do to help you and help your business succeed, that's what we want to happen.
Of course.
If you're successful, we're successful.
Thank you so much.
We're the Swanee County family now, so we appreciate it.
And one of the things too, is how many jobs?
So we hired 130 people.
Fantastic.
And we are working them.
I believe it.
And I think for some of our other QSR type, you know, facilities, quick service restaurants, you don't see that kind of employment, right? But that's why the service is what it is. And if you visit that place, they will service you to death, so. But as far as the campaign itself, I would think the return on investment that with what Carissa does and the marketing, if we can say we only got one win out of that campaign, I'll take it to Chick-fil-A.
100%. Mr. Rogers, again, thank you. If there's anything that our board can do, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us or Mr. Norris or whatnot. We want to see you be successful.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. I got the consent agenda. There's items three through 21. Any questions, comments, concerns, or anything on that agenda to be pulled for discussion?
I don't know for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion from Commissioner Hale to approve. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Dungtown specifics, handle those. Constitutional officers, item 24, appointment of Heather Henderson Shoy, I think I said that right, as Director of Emergency Management. Sheriff Sam St. John.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just, just giving the announcement that we've appointed Heather Henderson as the Director of Emergency Management. And this is, obviously this is going to be in accordance with the Florida Statute 252.38, which she meet all, which she meets all of our requirements from the statute. This is established, maintain emergency management and agency to appoint a qualified director. I am pleased to inform, to formally submit for your approval of the appointment of Heather Henderson as a new Director of Emergency Management here November 4th of 2025. And as you know, Heather, she was kind of thrown in there to the, into the wolves area because, yeah, we had three hurricanes kind of back to back and then that tornado, so she got a lot of hands-on experience and all. But Heather, I hear again, she brings a wealth of experience to emergency management, primarily resource coordination and community engagement. Her leadership and dedication in public service makes her exceptionally well suited for fulfill the statutory responsibilities outlined in Chapter 252, including coordinated and emergency management. Upon the board's approval, this point will be submitted to the Florida Division of Emergency Management for her official recognition. Any questions on that, sir?
Y'all got any questions for Sheriff? Sheriff, I'm just going to make a comment, and again, I'm just one of five, but I congratulate Ms. Shoy, but I'm going to be honest with you, in the middle of an audit, I'm not comfortable confirming anybody until we're through with the audit. I just think that that'd be bad business on my part to, until we get done with that, just to make sure everything's in order over there. So that's just my position. It's nothing personal, but that's kind of where I'm standing. I'm not, I'm not ready to appoint anybody to the EOC until we're through, just through with that cherry picket audit. Again, I'm just one guy, so that's where I'm at on it. But again, anybody else is welcome to comment or overrule or make a motion if they so choose. Do I have a motion to approve that agenda item? Period none, sounds like we're going to wait.
Thanks, sir.
We'll wait on that. Next item on the agenda, staff items. Any staff present wishing to speak? Ms. Flanagan, would you, would you mind coming up? I want to keep the board in the loop on where we're at with Scrap and Scott and FDOT, who's trying hard to help us, and particularly on County Road 250. We were awarded, and I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the 30,000 foot view, Ms. Flanagan, fill in the blanks. We were awarded several million, several, several million dollars to do from, take Route 51 to 193rd Road, which is Clayland Road. With the design build, we were going, aiming for 12-foot lanes, which would be more conducive to semi-trucks, school buses, et cetera, et cetera. And after the design and the preliminary cost estimates, we are almost $2 million short, a little over $2 million short, I think. Myself, Ms. Flanagan, other staff members met with FDOT team in Mr. Norris's office the 31st for several hours to discuss multiple items. So the question that they posed to us, they gave us basically three options. Number one, shorten the road with an inferior scope, meaning a lesser quality of a road. Number two, do it the way we designed it, which was 12-foot lanes, which is where I feel like it needs to be. And then option, and shorten it by two miles to do the higher quality road. I say higher quality. Quality be the same, but the width, the width of the road, more asphalt, more work. Or option three, go to 11-foot lanes with the safety edge and get the entire distance, although we would be $1.5 million short. Yeah, so still short even with 11-foot lane. So, and I'm not just telling the board about this, I'm kind of, I guess, going to give y'all my two cents and then prepare y'all for what might be coming for your DOT roads, and then also kind of get a consensus on how, I mean, yes, in my district, but collectively we need to make a decision on what we want to do with, with road paving, repaving projects with FDOT. So, you know, the consensus that myself and staff had was to take option two to get to 193rd Road with the 11-foot lanes. FDOT did feel like...
It would actually be 12.
12-foot. 12-foot with a safety edge and not the two-foot shoulder. That's right. 12-foot lanes, but no two-foot shoulder. So basically, the road would be 12-foot wide lanes, but no, no shoulder outside the white But we'd still be a million and a half short, right?
1.3.
1.3. FDOT felt like there's a new fiscal year for the state coming up soon. They felt like they could find a million bucks to, to help that if we would be willing to compromise on that and lose, drop the two-foot shoulder. So...
The length difference that we're talking about is 3.5 miles versus 5.98 miles, so basically six miles. If we go this route, we can get basically the whole project done.
So where I get more furious, and it's not FDOT's fault, but the cost of inflation, the cost of products, so we get awarded money through Scrap and Scott, and we go public and we tell everybody, hey, we got, you know, $7 million to redo County Road 250, and it's going to be XYZ, well, then that's a five-year work program. So by the time we get to the actual work and bidding the product, we're in year four, and now your cost is up 33%. Now you don't have enough money. And it's nobody's fault, but just the world we live in today and the, going through the legislature and the fiscal process of being allocated, or being awarded the money, being allocated the money, then going to design, then going to build, bid, and then going to construction, this DOT's five-year work program. And we're not alone. Every rural county in the state fights these same battles. So my stance was, you know, one, I'd like to do it right the first time, so never to do it again, which would be with two-foot shoulders, but you're going to shorten the road by two and a half miles. So I guess consensus of the board is just kind of get y'all's thoughts because this, that's, I'm not going to be here forever, and some of y'all might still be here when I'm not here, I don't know, but that road is our road. It ain't my road. It is in my district, but just kind of get y'all's thoughts and update you. And Ms. Brenda, if I said anything wrong or misstated anything, correct me. But I mean, that's, just kind of sharing with y'all a little bit of my struggles.
You preach to the choir down here. You know, I had to go back three times for Mitchell Road, and it's the same scenario every time.
Was that option available for 49?
We run out of money.
Yeah. We lost a lot while I was there.
Right. Yeah, we can circle back around, but the ship's probably sailed, but...
So anyway, I wanted to get the distance because the distance is, one, that's the safety that we're after, and then, you know, the county can't afford to pave $7 million roads. Like, we just can't afford that. I mean, we'd be here, we'd be, Commissioner White, you know, you were trying to get 184th done, and it's, it's $4 million. We just went through budget workshops, like, and we're talking just six and a half, seven miles worth of road, a million dollars a mile, like, you know, we'd be, I don't have a good analogy, but something in the wind trying to do it.
I probably won't be alive anymore by the time we get it done.
Anyway, what's y'all's thoughts? What's your, I mean, that's kind of what I told them. Hey, I'll scrap the shoulder, give me 12-foot lanes, let me get to 193rd Road. And if, and they did say, if we, if we can't find the full 1.3, would the county be willing to come up with another 3 or 400,000 if we had to? I told them, yeah, we'd find it to get us there, but if we couldn't, they felt like maybe if we could wait, by that time, we'd be close to another fiscal year, they may could find the other 3 or 400,000. So I'm kind of bringing y'all in the loop so I don't hit you with that later, but also just... just bringing you up to date on Scrap and Scott.
But they did say that they did not think that they could come up with a 2.6.
Yeah, they said the 2.6 is out of the question. They said 2.6, we can't find that.
Yeah. No, I think that's your best option, Commissioner Lamb, for that project. But I'm back to what, you know, how you started us off. State's got to help us with this, you know? Tallahassee's got to help with this. Because again, we're never going to get caught up or get ahead with a little bit of funding we have through these.
So what you're saying is that if we drop the shoulders and get the 12-foot lanes and get up to 193rd Road, and then from there on, you got.
We got another, that's halfway to the bridge. That's roughly halfway to the bridge. And they do have the other half programmed in the program. But I think they have that scheduled for, and I didn't know that when they told us. Okay.
It was 27 or 28?
Yeah, to start. But it would be probably 2030 before the second half of 250C's asphalt.
Yes.
2030. But, you know, Fayette County just did their side. They're well aware of the bridge and the new bridge. So, I mean, 250 is a priority for them, too, because it has high traffic counts, whatever. They want to see that corridor completed. But that's where I'm at on 250. I'll take any advice y'all got or free money. Next? I ain't heard no volunteers.
Well, I think that's going to be about the best choice is to go there.
Yeah, I tell y'all that to see if y'all want to change and shift gears. By all means, y'all can outvote me, but that's kind of what I thought, too, was Plan B was, I mean, Commissioner White, you own heavy trucks. I know y'all like a shoulder, and I do, too, but I just don't know how I can get there.
It's nice, but it ain't necessary.
So did I make the right call already? Y'all want to do something different?
That's what the call I would have made perfectly.
Guys.
So do with that.
We'll just keep moving forward with that. I appreciate you coming up there. I just kind of wanted to enlighten y'all with our meeting. It was quite some time.
I'm more sure about the mine.
Okay. Any other staff members? Commissioner items? Any Commissioners? Y'all got anything? County attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things, I'll try to make them brief. The first, I see Clerk Baker back there. Mr. Baker contacted me and asked if I'd be willing to serve as the attorney for the clerk's office. I told him I'd be more than willing to. My contract allows for me to work for other government entities, but I don't like to do things without running it by you guys first, just to make sure y'all are okay with it. Just as if for some reason there were, and this advice goes both ways, any type of conflict between the clerk and the commission, I would have to conflict out of both sides, so I can't pick one. So I'd have to be out on both. But I've talked with other county attorneys who serve in similar capacities in their counties. On the whole, it tends to make for better relationships because people can speak as to what's going on on each side. So, but I wanted to let you guys know and ask if it was okay. It saves Clerk Baker some money because I won't, I'm not charging him a retainer. I'll just be charging him whatever the hourly rate is that I'm charging the county at the time. So it's just letting you guys know, and if you guys could tell me if you guys have any problem with it.
Well, can we, can he split the retainer with us?
I've got a conflict. I can't answer that question.
And I say no if you're already conflicting that. I'm kidding. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we just talked to the clerk about the IT, and his IT folks have graciously taken the county on and trying to help us with our IT, which is a cost savings to the county. So I don't have a problem.
Or do I?
We need consensus. Hail's good.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's okay with you.
You got consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second thing, and, Mr. Chairman, you're up to speed on this, as well as Commissioner White, but to bring the rest of the board up. I'm going to say everything here as adjectiveless as I can, just to say things that will be in the public record, because this involves lawsuits. So just to give a little bit of history, Swanee Iron Works is a business that is located in the south part of the county, Commissioner White's district. They've had a code enforcement proceeding instigated against them approximately two weeks ago. There was a notice served by our code enforcement. They went out to, given the 10-day notice, it says they'll be back to check on the status of violations. They came back. When code enforcement came back, code enforcement was accompanied by the fire marshal as well as our building inspector. When the building inspector was out there, they realized that literally none of the, literally none of the buildings that were out there were permitted either to be built at all or for electricity. That presents a health and safety issue because it's unknown whether or not it's safe to operate in those structures at all. Because of that, a stop-work order and an order to shut down the electricity to Swanee Iron Works was issued by our building inspector last week on Wednesday or Thursday. And so that was posted, and that was directing the electricity to be turned off Friday last week. We were served with papers, not, I'm using "served" incorrectly. I was sent papers from attorneys representing Swanee Iron Works threatening a lawsuit and demanding that the stop-work order be rescinded. Given the emergency situation of it and the imminency of the stop-work order, quite frankly, I did not have time to get involved in a lawsuit right then, right there, at that moment, which is what it was involving, because it was emergency injunctions. So I contacted our county administrator, Mr. Scott. I recommended that the county hire Mr. Tom Reeves to represent Swanee County in this matter. Just so the board's aware, my reason for the recommendation of Mr. Reeves is twofold. One, he is board certified in county and government law. He's also board certified in appellate law. And he's also the county attorney for Madison County. So he has prosecuted lawsuits on behalf of property owners against other boards, so people who would be in the position that Swanee Iron Works is, versus Swanee County. He's also defended Madison County in similar situations. So he was eminently qualified. I spoke with Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott agreed. So just so the board is aware, I don't have a legal conflict as to the matter, but I simply could not take on the extreme amount of work that goes with immediate litigation in terms of emergency injunctions. So on Friday, at approximately noon, the county was formally served with a lawsuit on behalf of Swanee Iron Works. And that was after the stop-work order, and the power had been turned off at approximately 9:00 AM that morning. That afternoon, on Friday afternoon, Judge Feagle, who is the judge presiding over the case, issued an injunction telling the county to turn the power back on. Judge Feagle's reasoning was that the, for lack of, I'm going to speak in legalese, so I apologize, but from his, the threat of imminent harm to the county of not turning the power on is minimal. There's no, it doesn't harm the county to turn the power back on. And he was not able to have that hearing, so this was all done Friday. We were fixing to have the hearing yesterday, so Friday, Monday, Monday or Tuesday. But the prejudice to Swanee Iron Works is extreme if it waits 30 days to accommodate the judge's calendar. So they could be right, but end up losing their business because the power shut off the whole time. So he ordered the power be turned back on for 30 days, and there will be a hearing in the meantime on their injunction. Swanee County is also filing an injunction, for an emergency injunction as well, because of improper use of the property and violation of our zoning, which brings me to the next. So the first thing I wanted to do is just update you guys as to the status of, this is litigation the county is involved in, that is pending and is actively being litigated. Mr. Reeves is handling and making all the legal decisions. I am talking to him just so I can know what the status is. But that's the extent of my involvement. The next bit, and this is me kind of just letting you all know, is the, where the Swanee Iron Works is, is zoned as A1 agriculture. We anticipate, and county will process it just like anybody else, that they will be applying for a special permit to allow them to move forward with how they are operating right now. When that permit comes in, this board will have to sit as the jury and the judge to determine whether or not to grant that special permit. So this is me telling you guys that if somebody wants to reach out to you and talk about it, remember, you will be serving as a quasi-judicial officer. The Code of Ethics says you're not supposed to talk with anybody about it because it's going to be coming in front of you guys. I've also gone ahead, because I don't know what staff's position will be, but I've checked with Mr. Scott. And since Mr. Reeves will be the person who is most familiar with the facts of the case, given the fact that he's litigating the injunction, he will be presenting the staff position on that. When that permit comes, when that permit application comes through, Mr. Reeves will be the one presenting staff's position as to that special permit, so that way I can continue to sit up here and serve the board as a legal advisor. So I know that was me being long-winded. I'm more than happy to answer any questions about procedure and what's going on, but I don't feel it's appropriate for me to ask questions about what should or should not happen, if that distinction makes a difference.
Thanks for the update. Anybody got any questions in regards to what has happened for Mr. Morrison? All right. Mr. Morrison, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Next agenda item, consultant items. Are there any consultants present wishing to speak? Seen none. General business, item 25, discuss with possible board action inter-local agreement with Columbia County and North Florida Water Utilities Authority Board for operations and maintenance of county utilities. Mr. Shannon Roberts. Let's see, here he is. Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Chairman, we spoke of this earlier today during the budget workshop, and I had signaled to you that there would be an agenda item for the board to consider. It has to do with the utility authority has crafted a inter-local agreement to perform the operations and maintenance for the water and wastewater facilities in Swanee and Columbia County. That was crafted with, as a collaborative effort between the utilities attorney, as well as the Swanee County attorney and the Columbia County attorney. It's essentially proposing a five-year term, which is, starts on October 1st to September 30th of each year, and it would auto-renew unless it would be canceled by the parties. The agreement provides for the North Florida Water Utility Authority personnel to operate all the plants, perform maintenance and repairs on the plants, do all the billing, the financial reconciliation, process all the bills, administrate and manage the facilities. Approving this inter-local agreement does come with a budget impact. So if both counties were to approve the inter-local agreement, there would be funding required to act, for the utility authority to actually operate and do the mechanisms and to follow all the processes in the agreement. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I mentioned that earlier today as well. So you can see the agenda item, how things are summarized. If there are any other questions you have about this, please let me know. There may be some questions that Mr. Morrison may be able to address if they're specifically about the agreement and its content from a legal perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Excuse me.
It's been a long one.
It's been a long day. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
Any questions?
No, we talked about it earlier today.
We talked about it earlier in budget workshops.
Yeah.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming up, if I could clarify one of my comments earlier, I just want to make the record clear regarding the Swanee Iron Works. Just to be clear, Mr. Reeves is not reporting to me. He reports to the county administrator. So I just want that record clear in case.
You got that, Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Hancock, name and address for the record.
Beau Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I want to get through this inter-local agreement with you, if y'all might.
Try to be brief. You know, we've been here going on 12 hours, 12, 10 hours.
Before you got here. So I've been here a little longer. Not much, but, first thing I wanted to, and you start off with this agreement, and I want to remind this board, March 2019, or 2023, I stood up here before y'all ever signed the first inter-local agreement, told you I didn't like the idea. Okay? Been opposed to it from the beginning. This is the second inter-local agreement that we have. And in this, it auto-renews for the next five years. In other words, it doesn't come back to this board. It automatically renews, unless somebody, I guess, raises cane. They are requesting this year, not the $520,648 that are mentioned, they now request $572,648, of which $50,000 would stay, or it was originally proposed to stay with the county, but Mr. Roberts mentioned that they couldn't do that this time, or at this time. Okay, that's just from the summary. To get to the inter-local, it was created by general law, by an inter-local agreement in between Columbia and Swanee Counties dated April 18th of 2024. Each county, let me see, I got to read my damn notes. Oh, this is now, the parties wish for the utility authority to take the overall responsibility in day-to-day operations and maintenance of the respective water and wastewater utility assets of Columbia and Swanee County commencing October 1. Now, this is one for the attorney. I have a question for consideration.
Yes, sir.
Why is that in there? I mean, explain this $10 to me. They charge $10 for doing this, I guess.
That's got, it's standard contract language, because you have to show for a valid contract. In legal terms, consideration is the mutual exchange of something of benefit. So everybody agrees money has value, so everybody from law school on just learns you throw that language in there, and you're good on the consideration front of it being a valid contract.
Well, there is, and we got to keep supporting this thing, the amount they want. Now, also, they have some schedules attached, exhibits. Exhibit A and B, A and B both list the assets in water and wastewater systems in both counties. A is for Columbia County, B is for Swanee County. Now, we have in Swanee County, what we have is the I-75136. There's a sewer plant out there, there's a water plant. Out at the catalyst site, we have a water plant. They're going to be constructing, it's going out for bids, or the bid was awarded for the wastewater facility, the sewer plant, to be built. That's not there yet. Currently, Columbia County has Ellisville, a water treatment plant, Mason City, water treatment plant, Fort White, they don't own, city of Fort White owns their plant, but it's operated by Columbia County. And also at Ellisville, they have a wastewater or sewer plant. There's no asset value attached to those items. So we don't know how they're going to be evaluated. There is some things going on with the authority, they've got a consultant that's doing a rate study and some other things. And the reason I mention the asset value's missing is, and I'll get to it as I go through here, the annual budget appropriation, and this was discussed in the preceding budget workshop. The request of the Water Authority to each of the counties for subsequent fiscal years during the term of this agreement, and any renewal thereof shall be made a part of this agreement. Commissioner Hale asked the question, is this going to go on forever? And I can't remember the exact phrase, but. And I can't remember the exact phrase, but it has no designated end. We could be doing this from now on. Any shortfall in the operating cost of the Water Authority shall be addressed by a request for additional budget appropriations to the governing bodies of Columbia and Swanee Water Authority shall be responsible for the following services, utility services, in connection with the authority and the assets. Operate and maintain each permitted wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant using a duly licensed plant operator for that plant facility, along with the additional support for utility workers and staff. Operate and maintain the other assets and functions of the water and wastewater utilities. Perform or cause to be performed environmental service to provide data and reports for existing Perform or cause to be performed environmental service and provide data and reports required by existing permits. Meter reading, billing, customer services. Administrative support includes finance, accounting, and information support technology. Most of those are not yet in place. As a matter of fact, the North Florida Water Utility Authority has no business plan. They've hired the consultant to develop a plan for them. That's all they've done so far, is hire consultants. North Florida Water Utility Authority shall apply its own name and assume oversight and administration of all such water and wastewater utility grants, loans, and/or state appropriations issued, allocated, or awarded in the name of the North Florida Water Utility Authority for water and wastewater systems additions, expansions, and improvements within Columbia and Swanee County. And each such grant, loan, and/or state appropriations shall be subject to inclusion in a separate interlocal agreement between the authority and the counties affected. Basically, each month, this whole section deals with, it means that each county pays upfront and then gets reimbursed later. Now, I'm not real sure how they're gonna, how that's gonna happen. It's kind of confusing to read that, or I don't understand it. Each of the Swanee and Columbia County, each Swanee and Columbia County, shall retain the risk of loss in the same manner as would the owner of any other facility, equipment, or property. Now, Swanee County and Columbia County are going to give, transfer ownership of these assets to the authority. We don't own them. All of them have been paid for, as far as I know, by grants. So y'all keep that in mind, you're gonna give them away.
Mr. Chairman.
For $10.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I clarify something?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, if you want me to recall.
It's okay.
No.
I like that.
Well, no, I just, I understand. Your argument is premised on something that's incorrect, and I just want to be very clear about it.
Okay.
The reason there are no values in the schedule is because the county is not releasing title.
Yet.
During the pendency of disagreement. So here's what the intent is, and I'll leave it to the board and the county to determine whether or not it's a good idea. But the intent is, you're absolutely right, there is no business plan, because until they get started doing something, we don't know what they're gonna do. So they have to have the ability to bill and operate, but we're not at the point of no return yet. The point of no return is when you do deed those assets over. That's when they're up and running. And so, for example, when you talked about the risk of loss, since they're gonna be and maintain, continue to be a county asset, county's gonna continue to insure them. That's, that's what that's meant to be. But I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any misunderstanding, that during the pendency of this agreement, this is the Water Authority getting up and running and taking over billing, taking over managing those, but title of the assets themselves will remain with the respective counties. And I do apologize for interrupting.
That's fine. That's good. I'm glad you clarified that. But the intent down the road is they're gonna turn them over to them. Is that not the intent? And we mentioned in the previous interlocal.
I mean, and this was at the water utility meeting. Here's the intent, quite frankly, and no disrespect to Mr. Roberts. This is the go or get off the pot moment for the utility authority. So either this is gonna work, and everything will work out, and that's fine. And if not, as you said, this agreement auto renews, it also has a termination ability in it, for us to say, you know what, this is an experiment, and it didn't work out.
Okay. I understand. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Keep me straight. Unless, and I'm going to just continue on.
Well, Mr. Hancock, instead of reading that stuff, how about just say under paragraph 10, I got a problem with this. I mean, it's in the agenda packet, I think we've, and I'm just saying that in spite of time.
I don't want to do that. The simple reason, I'm gonna go as quick as I can.
All right. Go ahead. We'll just try to be quick.
There are that many pages. The public needs to hear this. They don't get this item. This interlocal agreement is a public document. They have the ability to get it, but if they don't know about it, something's wrong with you. Where's the transparency? That's all I'm saying. Let me continue and finish. I know I'm over time, but I told you that before the meeting, that it was gonna take longer than seven.
All right, well, let's quit talking, and you get back to it.
Thank you. Unless otherwise separately budgeted and appropriated and procured by the Water Utility Authority, neither Columbia nor Swanee shall be obligated to provide supplemental equipment, vehicles, materials, or other consumables necessary for the water utility to operate and maintain the Columbia utility assets and the Swanee utility assets. This paragraph shall not be construed to prohibit or otherwise limit either county from making additional contributions of capital, equipment, and manpower. The Water Utility Authority shall not undertake any capital improvements to the Columbia utility assets without the written consent of Columbia County, nor shall, or that same thing would apply to Swanee County. This agreement is intended in part to provide for a smooth transition of the future ownership of the, again, let me restart that. This agreement is intended in part to provide for a smooth transition of the future ownership of the Columbia utility assets and the Swanee utility assets from each of Columbia and Swanee County respectively to the Water Authority. It is necessary, let me, I lost, it come place again. However, prior to such future legal transfer of ownership of utility assets as ultimately contemplated by the Water Authority in a local agreement, it is necessary to appropriate for the Water Utility to operate and maintain the Columbia utilities assets and the Swanee utilities assets, and to the greatest extent possible, combine their operation and maintenance under a single utility, providing for water and wastewater utility service within the utilities geographic boundaries. And again, this goes back to the renewal, starting, the contract, this interlocal runs from October 1st to September 30th for every year, and it shall renew automatically on an annual basis. And they can terminate this. Anybody that wants to see this, it was part of the agenda packet, and I'm sure that this information is available. If you want to contact me, I'll see if I can make copies of this for you, if anybody wants it. Well, mine's kind of written up, or written on. But the amount of money they want now, and they do include a budget, this is what was discussed today, was their proposed budget. And I'm pretty sure the, that the additional $52,000, originally, they talked as much as $200,000 to $300,000. But that would stay with the counties. But I think, and Shannon, correct me, the $52,000 would be tacked on top of the original request of $520,648. That makes the total of $57,200, or wait a minute, $572,648. I can't read my own writing. Now, he does include utility revenue of, and this he says came from last year's operations of $731,970. That's the revenue on its own. How long do you think it's gonna take before this operation becomes self-sustaining? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anybody else from the public? Sure. Name and address for the record.
I'll be brief. Steve Fontana, 21181, 144th Street, Live Oak. The interlocal agreement should specifically address that the North Florida Water Authority does not have any jurisdiction or authority over private wells or wells solely owned by businesses. I don't believe that, I've ever seen any verbiage associated with this organization like that. The geographic area covers all of us, covers the whole county, as far as I understand. So I think there should be specific verbiage within the interlocal agreement that only the Live Oak, the county, and you guys are gonna address what I do with my well, not some other bureaucracy.
Actually, I'm not either. Swanee River Water Management is. So, I mean, that's, that's under their jurisdiction. I mean, if I'm gonna drill a well, you're not gonna get permission from me, you're gonna get it from Swanee River Water Management District. So I don't, I mean, they trump, they trump us. So I can't tell you, I can't tell you what to do with your well. I can't. Swanee River Water Management District's the well people.
Okay. And they have nothing to do with it?
Mm-mm.
All right. I'm misunderstanding.
Well, you're gonna have to get in line and get over here, name and address, name and addri-
I've been here 15 years.
Well, after him.
Steel Moses, Slupper, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak. As far, I agree with Mr. Hancock on all renewal. I mentioned that as well. That's dangerous, in my opinion. There's a lot of discussion out there that this is primarily to benefit one individual privately owned Fort White neighborhood development. That's a concern. I don't, I haven't dug in, don't plan to dig in to find that out. It'll come out, if that's the case. As Ben's mentioned, there's no business plan. I don't know. I think they've been paying $5,000 a month for many months for this fellow to do it, and it's been extended at least one time I'm aware of. I mean, I'm pretty basic in my business experiences. I'd have gone out and, and I'd have taken what has already been done with similar communities, and I'd have copied that roughly to jumpstart with and developed it from there. That saves a lot of money, could have saved a lot of money, still could maybe. But as far as rate estimates or rate study, same thing. That could have been done similarly. I've done loose math. It's about $20,000 a year per, per client right now, is what's gonna have to be paid to break even. I don't think any of those 14, or 15, or 16. I don't even get to know how many we actually have, but they're not gonna want to pay $20,000 on top of what they're already paying. So from the onset of this endeavor, I've looked positively at its potential. I guess the opposite side could look at it as negative. I've heard my comments referred to as negative. I actually see them two of them as very positive. I'm a, Mr. Chick-fil-A's my new buddy, because he, he put the chairman in place, saying that, you know, he's pretty sure that people that speak out here are, have the best interest of this county at heart. I, I hope most do. But I've looked positively at this, its potential, but have cautioned in questioning the feasibility of the North Florida Water Authority between and only just the two counties. And my initial suggestion, my initial suggestion was to equitably distribute efforts from both Swanee's and Columbia's workforce and customize an interlocal agreement that would be equitable when it comes to use efforts and expenses. Where we are now is not what I'd hoped for. We're looking at over $750,000 in investments from each county, along with all its unassessed assets being turned over at high risk. And I heard Mr. Morrison, but that is the plan. I've not seen the documented values of the respective counties' assets, the demand from each county's client group, or even an accurate headcount of each county's client list. Also, currently, we understand there is approximately $2 million in Ellisville debt. Allegedly, Ellisville has been subsidized by the Columbia County General Fund at the expense of the taxpayers for at least 10 years at $300,000 per year. That's a $3 million over a 10-year period. The question is, is the Water Authority planning to subsidize Ellisville for the next 10 years for another 300 million, or 3 million or more? Not sure how that, this can be an equitable venture. Just because one individual looks at the data and determines without oversight, I don't, I don't agree or confirm, or, nor am I comfortable with that statement. I don't, I don't have faith that it's equitable. Instead of us working through an interlocal agreement utilizing each county's workforce, we have kicked this thing off with a minimum of $1.5 million in overhead. Once, again, once all our assets are leveraged, there's no guarantee that the taxpayers won't have to foot the bill to buy back the debts. If the, the Water Authority fails, it's, it's not good business model or practice, gentlemen. It's basically, like I said, from the first kick, it was putting the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm still Stu Spur.
Name and addri-
Wayne Hancock, 11883, 93rd Road. I know you're all tired of hearing this, but I'm kind of tired of wasting our money. But you're about to engage in something that has no business plan. The very first meeting I went to, I was told, we're working on it. Every meeting, almost every meeting, I've asked, when's the business plan gonna be done? Well, now we're up to August, that's about eight months I've been going to meetings. There is no rate study, they're working on it. But they paid $130,000 for the rate study, and just made a payment with like $52,000 to keep them going. There's just a lot of money going out the door with no return in sight, no business plan, a director that has no experience in this field. Total of $822,000, because we already kicked in $250,000 last year. I'd ask you, Mr. White, because you and I had a discussion, to go look at the actual cost and actual expenses, not the budgeted. There's a big difference. I just don't feel like you're being good stewards of our money, and that's the last time you'll hear me about this one.
Name and address, Mr. Looker, when you get there, for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Stu Looker, 247 Southwest Land Court, Columbia County, Florida. I'm the publishing editor of the Columbia County Observer. And I haven't been here, I guess, in about 15 years, since the first time Mr. Hale got elected. We all may remember the North Florida Broadband Authority, that fiasco, that was Mr. Hale's first chore to decide on that. And after North Florida- And after North Florida squandered $30 million, those around Henry County squandered $24 million, and a broadband outfit out of Georgia squandered about $38 million. Over $80 million was wasted. At that time, Mr. Hale was on his first roundup, this commission decided to withdraw. It made sense, it looked at the facts and withdrew. I was just hoping that when I came tonight, that Mr. Hale was here would have grown back after all these years, but apparently it has not. I'm a little confused, I heard your attorney say during the pendency of this agreement, none of these assets will be transferred? I'm not exactly sure what he said, but I heard everything he said, and anybody that wants to see the agreement, the last article in the Columbia County Observer has a link to the 12th Hour Agenda and all those attachments that you're going to see. It appeared that the director couldn't bring those to the meeting on time. So everybody was hunting for them. The money that you're going to give, this emergency money, this new thing on the budget, and I would like an answer maybe when I sit down about the pendency of this agreement during the pendency, there's no transfer? We've heard that this thing is on training wheels, that this is just an experiment, and they're not spending any money yet, but you have. They're approaching spending a million dollars and have nothing to show for it. And I suggest anybody, I have a copy of the draft of the business plan, and I would request, as a taxpayer, that you look at it before you approve this. You don't have to approve this tonight, you can approve it next month, you can maybe get more public input, and look at it. It looks like something that was done with AI, and I'm very familiar with AI because occasionally I use AI to look for stuff. And this business plan talks about visions and this and that, and I started reading it again today, and I really think you guys got to read it before you vote on it. The emergency money that you're contributing, I guess $52,000 on your side, Columbia County's contributing in $100,000, but it's only for your assets. And I can only say, Mr. Chairman, that's a heck of a partnership. I mean, if I go into business with somebody, then we're partners. If I go into business with you and we open up a gas station, we're partners. But you guys are not partners. The legislative appropriation that the authority got was never approved by the Authority Board to even go for that appropriation. And Columbia County's partner, Swanee County, couldn't get their appropriation. Maybe if you both guys would have done it at once, and this was a real authority, maybe you would have got enough to actually done something. But you didn't. It's sort of like, right now, divide and conquer. The emergency money, $100,000 from Columbia, $52,000 or whatever it is from Swanee, once that gets contributed to the authority, right now, they can spend it any way they want. There's no restriction on that money, none. So if something happens bad in Columbia County, and your executive director wants to spend the money, he spends it. Then you're out the money. Again, another reason not to vote on this, that money should stay with the counties. The counties aren't going bankrupt, I don't think you are, anyway. Columbia County's got a ton of money in reserves, I presume you guys have millions in reserves, you have good credit, so if there's an emergency that has to be solved because a water tower falls down in either county, well, you're going to have to pay for it. This, this is just nonsense that you have to line up contractors right away and deplete your county's money on the chance that something might happen, because if something happens, you're going to fix it anyway. The other thing I have, only two more things. This thing started out where Swanee County had, I believe, 14 customers, then it went to 16 customers, and now there's 18 county, 18 customers in Swanee County. I don't see any residential customers. The only way utilities pay for themselves is with sprawl. The Authority in Lake City, their utilities have 8,500 customers. Toho has over 62,000 customers. Unfortunately, the chairman thought it was millions, but it's not. You need thousands of customers to make this work. 16 customers is going to keep you guys spending money and spending Swanee County money until the 12th of never, because there's just not enough customers to make that work. And I don't know where the other customers came from, I guess that was a billing problem, and maybe it's time, I don't know, maybe you discussed it in the budget workshop, that apparently you guys had some utility customers that were either being extremely undercharged or not charged at all. So before you vote for this agreement with somebody that has no experience in running a utility, you might want to take a second look at that. My final question, Mr. Chairman, is a taxpayer of Columbia County who's contributing to the running of this whole authority. My understanding is that Shannon Roberts is still working for Swanee County. He has Swanee County offices, he's not going to be replaced, he's in the process of being replaced or something, and I don't know how or if he's, how he separates his work, but I know one thing, and it's really a problem for Swanee County. His emails are on the Swanee County email service, servers. So when you go to get a public records request, quite frankly, lately, he's been very responsive, but what is that, how does that work? Do I have to go to Swanee County now to get public records because his records are kept on Swanee County servers? I suggested that they be kept someplace else. And how much is he working for Swanee County? Because I think Columbia County taxpayers need to know. And I don't know that you guys would really feel that good, knowing that Columbia County, well, maybe you would, is subsidizing his salary. So that's what I have to say. The only thing I'm asking you guys is to look back for over 15 years ago, I guess, Mr. Hale. It's been a long time since this board had the courage with other counties to withdraw from that fiasco called the North Florida Broadband Authority. I'm not saying you should do it tonight with this Water Authority. I just write stories, you know, and one vote, when I go to vote. But what I'm saying is there's time. This is not an emergency, there's no exigent circumstance, there's a lot of money involved. How much more money could you spend on recreation in Swanee County, which everybody needs? You see, Alden Rosner is here, he could spend money on recreation, I'm sure, is that there's a lot of things you could do with the money instead of paying $125,000 for an executive director plus benefits right now. Thank you very much, I just hope you would consider those, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Looker. Anybody else from the public? I'm going to close public comment. I don't know if I ever opened it, but I'm closing it. Board members, any questions, comments, concerns to Mr. Roberts, or Mr. Scott, or Mr. Morrison? Don't sound like we got any.
I don't have any.
Well, y'all know what's in front of you, you've heard from the public, you've heard from Mr. Roberts, we talked about this in our budget workshops, I mean, we're spending the money already. We're, we're, we're spending it. It's already in the budget and we're spending it. I don't know if we're spending it efficiently, or as efficiently as we could be, I should say, but we're spending it. Those assets are there, they got to be maintained, they got to be monitored, they got to be taken care of. It's got to be built, it's got to be checked, it's got to be inspected, water quality, et cetera, et cetera. So the question is to the board, you got an interlocal agreement here in front of you, the question is, do I have a motion to approve this interlocal? Or is there any other comments or anything before we, or before I ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll just echo what you said, we're already paying to keep them up, we're just transferring the budgets for operating these utilities that we're already paying for out of our budget and transferring it to the water utility to have it run, our utilities. And that's basically what we're discussing. We're note not transferring assets at this time, it's just maintenance and operation. I don't know what else to say to it.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner White?
I see it.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda. Oh, yeah, there is an additional one. Yep, one additional agenda item, and that is authorization to advertise for bids for the installation of additional trail lighting along the Swanee River Greenway in Brantford toward the Trail Go grant. This is from Parks and Rec, so basically just asking for an authorization to bid. I got a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero on the approval of that bid, which is grant funded. Any other additional agenda items?
No, sir.
Twenty-seven, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
The only thing I want to share tonight is, as the commissions are aware, we had a situation at the mine with the dragline that was getting ready to go swimming, and so we had to make some emergency expenditures to get that rectified, bringing wrecking crews in to work on that for several days, and just, it was outside my spending authority as an emergency, so I just want to make sure that I let the commissioner be aware of it, it's $100,000 for that wrecking service to save that dragline. So answer any questions that you might have.
No, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott spoke to myself, and I believe he spoke to the vice chair as well, and we agreed that that was the right thing to do, was to save it and hire the wrecking companies to come in and save the dragline. The dragline was about to go into the water, kind of an emergency situation, I think, I forget the county, but another county had theirs fall in the water somewhere in central Florida, and it was a seven-figure expense getting it out of the water. So I told Mr. Scott to proceed, let's get it, let's not let it fall in. Heavy equipment came in, moved dirt, got underneath it. Multiple heavy, heavy, heavy-duty wreckers came in and were able to save it from going in the water, which would have been much more expensive, so, but thank you for bringing that up.
Just want to add, it's one of those situations that all hands on deck, staff did an awesome job in making it all happen, pull out resources, relationships they have with other folks, and it was a lot of moving parts for a few days, and just proud of what they were able to do with the partners we have, with the wrecking crews that have come to help us, so.
Absolutely. Hats off to the staff that made some quick decisions too, to get the right people here to save our dragline, which lines the lime rock that we all drive on from going into the water. What else you got?
That's all I got.
Man, you must be tired too.
I just need to be quiet.
Next item on the agenda is twenty-eight, which is board members' inquiries. I think we, did I start with you last time, Commissioner Perkins?
I started with Hale last.
I started with Hale last, all right, well, I'll start with Commissioner. I usually, I flip-flop, so I started with him last, I'll start with Commissioner Perkins.
Okay. Just thankful to Ms. Brenda and the crew, Gene back there, and ALTM that take care of the road, and out there, 80th Terrace, I appreciate that, and down at the other, other road, the 80th Lane. Thank you, and thanks to all of our people out there working in this hot sun, we do appreciate them and their hard labor and the hard efforts they're doing. Thank you for keeping that department together and everybody working smoothly. And thankful to it, none of our guys got hurt during the time we're moving that dragline. Thank God for them not getting hurt. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Mobley?
I think, keep the Lundie family and Dial family in your prayers, they lift that depth in the families, and appreciate everybody for coming.
Absolutely. Keep them in your prayers. The Lundie family's off patriarch and matriarch within a couple of months.
Yeah.
So bad deal there. Commissioner Hale?
I echo that with the Lundie family and Dial family. I just appreciate everybody coming out to the meetings today, and do appreciate our county staff and all departments. A lot of them get overlooked, but we couldn't do it without any of them, so we appreciate each and every one of you.
Commissioner White?
Thank you all for coming, it's been a long day. Want to say thank you to the staff at the mine and whoever else was involved. I was down there for a little while when the dragline was about to go in the drink, but they, they pulled it together and got it out, which the chairman alluded to, would have been a lot more expensive if it fell in the water to get out, and still wouldn't have been any good, so it's just a cost of doing business, but I appreciate all the hard work that they put in to get that out. Thank you all, appreciate you coming.
Hundred percent, thank you all. Thanks to Keith and Nina for the budget. I mean, we're not over with yet, but the amount of work and time that finance and the clerk staff puts into preparing the budget so we can sit here for eight hours and discuss it and probably come back again tomorrow for another four or five hours to talk about it, thank you all for that, and taking the time with the commissioners to go through it, answer all of our questions. And then, you know, admin too, and all the department heads for the work y'all put into the budgets and the thoughtfulness and trying to be as fiscally conservative as you can. Like Commissioner Perkins said, I think, the public works and the heat and the humidity, hats off to those guys out there sweating their butts off every day. I don't know what's hotter, sitting in this seat sometimes or being out there with them, but nonetheless, hats off to those guys.
There you go.
And then, you know, what I would say is, to the public, any of this information that you want, it's available. So you can get it via email, it's on our website, like, it's there. If someone chooses to ignore it or not seek it, it's hard for me to force it on them. It's there. If you want to get it, it's available, there's nothing to hear that anybody's trying to hide. But, but secondly, what I would say is, do your own research, you know, I heard multiple mistruths spoke tonight at that podium, and what I'll say to that is, I'll allude to one of them, you know, I was accused of not spending the county's money like I would spend my own, because certainly I wouldn't pay $70,000 a year on interest, and I wouldn't. That's why that line of credit that he was talking about has a zero balance, and has for several years now. But, you know, if you own a business, you're going to have a line of credit, because there's sometimes an emergency comes up, and whether or not you have a zero balance or a million-dollar balance on it, it doesn't matter, but sometimes situations arise where you need a lot of cash and you need it quick, and moving, moving money around takes time. And I think that's what we use, I know that's, in my mind, that's what I use that line of credit for, is it's an emergency, it's a, hey, how can we figure this out? I know we can figure it out, but meanwhile, grab it off a line of credit, we've, historically, we've used it to buy land until we can budget it or get an appropriation or whatnot, but that line of credit has a zero balance. We're not paying $70,000 a year in interest, I wouldn't do that with my money, Dankshere wouldn't do it with the counties. So, you know, the moral of that story is, do your own research, don't listen to everything that's said at that podium because it's not always facts. There's a lot of assumptions said, there's a lot of accusations, but if you want to know something, just ask. But do your own research, and if there's something you don't know and you want to know it, just ask any of these five guys or any of our staff, and I promise you, we will tell you what we know, as it is. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox, I've been here since about 8:30 this morning.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
My wife's out of town, I'm single dad in it, so I'm, go home for more punishment. All I need is a motion, I got a motion, I got a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to-